Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April 14th meeting of the Burnsville Planning Commission. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Sorry about that. First item on tonight's agenda is adoption of the agenda. Can I hear a motion?
So moved, Chair.
Second, please. Oh, thank you. Motion by Commissioner Singh and seconded by Commissioner Bradrick. Had to pick somebody. Thank you. Can we bring it to a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passes five zero. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the April, excuse me, the March 24th, 2014 meeting. Any comments on the minutes from anybody? Staff?
No changes from staff.
Any changes from commissioners? Hearing no changes. Can I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
Okay. Vote is for approval of the minutes of the March 24th meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none. The minutes from the last meeting are approved. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Application for City of Burnsville for a conditional use permit for reconstruction of Black Dog Road within the floodplain and shoreline of the Minnesota River and Black Dog Lake between I-35W and Cedar Avenue. Turn it over to Mr. Slania.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. The application in front of you this evening is for conditional use permit. Hold on one second. There we go. The applicant, the city in this case, is proposing to reconstruct a portion of Black Dog Road. As you may know, Black Dog Road runs parallel to the Minnesota River. It is on the far north side of town. The proposal would reconstruct just under two, not two acres, two miles of Black Dog Road located generally between I-35W and Cedar Avenue. The project is within the floodplain and, excuse me, the floodway and the 100-year floodplain for the Minnesota River. It's also within the shoreline district for both the Minnesota River and Black Dog Road. Construction like this requires a conditional use permit reviewed by the planning commission and state council before any construction can take place. As I stated, it's under two miles, 1.75 miles, and it, the reconstruction will occur between the Lindale Bridge, which I'll get to in a second. Again, here's a portion of Black Dog Road. We're looking at reconstruction from the Lindale Bridge, which is in this area, up to the Black Dog Power Plant, which is in this area. I've got one more image. Again, 35W is over here. The Lindale Bridge is here, and the plant is in approximately this area. So it shows the stretch. This is the erosion control plan for the project. A brief history on the site. It is zoned conservancy. It is designated in the Minnesota River quadrant in the comprehensive plan. Back in 2012, there was an agreement in place between Excel and the city for a number of items, including the reconstruction of the Lindale Bridge, which has occurred already. That led to additional agreements and obligations by both sides. One of those is reconstruction of this portion of Black Dog Road. The city will contribute a monetary amount to the project. Once that is completed, it will be turned back to Excel Energy. The road was actually constructed by Excel in the 50s. In the 1970s, not knowing all the details, it was turned back to the city. As you may know, it is in, it is in dire shape at the moment, and it is a huge expense for the city. It floods almost on an annual basis or possibly every year, and the city invests quite a bit of money into the rehabilitation and reconstruction of that road. It has been open to the public in the past, but it really only serves one property owner, and that is Excel Energy. Their plant is located right in this area. So I'll let Mr. Peterson get into some of the other project details when we get there, but the intent is the city would construct this as part of a city project. There would, there are agreements in place for the rest of the financing. Once this is complete and some other items take place, Black Dog Road would then be closed to the public past, let me rephrase that, it would be closed to the public past the bridge and then turned back over to Excel. The most important thing to keep in mind when we're looking at the floodplain being located where it is, is that any construction, fill, grading, et cetera cannot affect the floodplain, cannot essentially artificially raise the level of that land to which it causes additional flood damage in the area or other areas by the project. So what the city's proposing to do would be reconstruct fully. This would not be a mill and overlay project. This will be removal of the existing road. I'm sorry, I thought I had some of the other images in there. Removal of the existing road and putting it back in place. There would be no fill. There would be no flood prevention occurring at this time. It is just reconstruction of the road to the same elevation that exists today. By those standards, both the DNR and the city's stormwater consultant have reviewed this. They find no concern. As with similar projects that have occurred either in the floodway or flood fringe, we're requiring confirmation once the road is reconstructed that a post-survey be done to confirm that no flood capacity, or the flood capacity was not changed with the reconstruction of the road. Again, commissioners, it is an extensive stretch. The road is in dire need of reconstruction, and it is part of the ongoing 2012 agreement between Excel and the city. That included the bridge that you saw a couple of years ago, the plat that the commission just saw most recently. There may be some questions on the trail and the reconstruction. I think between Ryan and I, we can answer those as they come up. Mr. Chair, it is a public hearing, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Slania. Any questions for Mr. Slania from fellow commissioners? Commissioner?
So Chris, the 150,000 is the city is, that's our contribution. The remaining, the cost will be assessed to the property owner, so to speak?
To the property owner. I don't know if it'll be assessed or paid by. Correct.
And then we would be, at that point, building the road to current city standards for a new road?
I don't know that. Is there curb, curb and gutter? No. Okay.
Commissioner, basically, we'll be reconstructing it going down one foot in depth. So end up with agencies, and forges of classified, or pavement on top of that. There will be no curb and gutter. There is none now. So it basically operates like a rural section.
Okay.
And so if we try to put curb and gutter, and then we end up with stormsworn and those sorts of things, then there's really no need for it.
What's the anticipated life given a potential flood every year of the new road?
I would say it's, there's two things that are going to impact it. First of all, maybe more impact than the flooding will be when Excel gets done with coal operations. This is going to be their haul road in and out of the plant. So it's going to be used extensively by a lot of fully loaded large trucks. So they need to know that in the springtime, their base is not going to be fully, it won't have its full strength. So it'll be partly up to how Excel uses the road. Given that we're going to be turning the road back to them, I'm not going to say it's of no concern to the city, but it is going to be their baby after, after this is done.
Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions from Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, this road is currently being maintained by the city, currently.
Correct.
And it costs approximately how much each year after the floods to rehab the road to make it passable?
I don't have a dollar figure, Ryan, approximately.
I would say somewhere in the tens of thousands. We wouldn't be in hundreds of thousands, but it's several hundred either. I would guess in the tens of thousands.
The work that is needed to rehab this road, according to background information, would cost over a thousand, a million dollars. But by turning the road over to Excel, the city is just making a contribution of 150,000, and the work will be done by Excel. Am I right?
The work will go out to bid.
Now, who is responsible for that? Is it the city or?
I'll let Ryan field that.
Yeah, part of the agreement is, is the city engineers and delivers the project as well. So we don't, Excel's not paying for that, but we are delivering the project for them.
Thank you. And when the work is done, the maintenance of the road will be Excel's?
Correct. Long-term, it will be. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners? Mr. Slania, I'd just add a little bit more on how does the road relate to the trail system, and are we giving the easement back for the road but keeping the, and how close is the trail? I mean, how does, how does that play with each other?
That is exactly why we brought Ryan in for this.
Okay. The situation with the trail is it's going to be a regional trail, not just owned by the city. Eventually going to go all the way up the Minnesota River, and then I think down into Savage and that sort of thing. So it's going to be a major system from, we're expecting in the year 2015 to build the trail from the plant to the new bridge, and that won't go in the same corridor as the road. It's going to be on one side or the other, and so, but when we build the section from the plant to the east, that section will be in the same corridor as the road is right now. So they're going to narrow up the existing Black Dog Road to about 12 feet is what the concept is, and then they're going to put the trail right beside it so they can fit the road and the trail right next to each other. This is from the plant to the east. But they need to keep two-way traffic, and like I talked about, all that hauling is going to occur. So they need to keep a nice wide road from the plant to the west. That's why the trail is following a different route than the actual road. I mean, it's going to be close to it, but not right next to it.
Okay. And we have the easements arranged for the trail or at this point?
Those are, were worked out as part of the plat that was done for the, for the project.
Okay. And then just looking at the volume, I think a lot of their existing coal deliveries was via rail. Is more of that coming via truck now, or is, or coming and going, or?
Go ahead.
As I discussed, by the year, by the time January, February rolls around next year, they're expected to not be using coal anymore. So they're going to get a lot of use this summer, though, hauling things in and out after we're done. So I guess I maybe shouldn't say January, February, but it's sometime in 2015, they're expecting to be done with coal and just operating on two of the four burners, generators. So they'll be generating less electricity.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Ryan, I know currently with the way it exists today, when we have flooding, the only way to get to the plants through a residential area to the south, is that still going to be the case? The plan is the road's still going to, so we're not really alleviating any of that traffic through the neighborhood during the time that the road may be flooded. We're, that's still kind of the plan, I guess?
Commissioner, this project will not solve that issue. If, I talked about two of the burners closing, if they were to re, reestablish those with some new, different style hydroelectric, or not hydroelectric, but I can't recall the term, but they won't, if they start using gas to, for those two burners, we may be able to negotiate an alternate route into the site with that. But with the project of this size, there isn't the dollars available to build an alternate route.
You talked a little bit about from the plant to the east. Where will the road be closed? I mean, so my understanding is the public will have access to get the trails from 35W to the Lindale Bridge on the west side, and I'm assuming there'll be some sort of gate once Excel takes responsibility. What will take place and where will that take place on the east side of the plant when you're coming from Cedar?
That location will be east of the Cedar Bridge, and there's already a parking lot there that will remain.
And then there'll be a bridge, and that was where the public could get on the trails from that?
Correct.
Okay.
So both the trails and any potential Excel access road will both have to use that bridge, existing Lindale Bridge, existing Cedar Bridge.
Cedar Bridge, okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions for staff from commissioners? Commissioner Tarek?
Thank you, Chair. Chris, from what I understand, this project is only for a portion of the road construction.
Correct.
Could you, could you expand on this, that why only portion of this being considered to be reconstructed, and the rest of it, or are we looking at in future for other improvements?
Please? That's a great question, Mr. Chair Commissioners. In this case, it's all about the timing and all about the agreement that's in place between the city and Excel. The first step, and it's all, it all has a domino effect also on plans that are occurring down at Excel. So as I said, the 1.75 miles is from this bridge to the plant. That reconstruction needs to occur this year as part of the turnback and as, as part of the prep so that Excel can start hauling equipment in and out for the decommissioning of the burners or whatever that term is. That really needs to happen first. The reason we're only dealing with this section as far as the trail goes, the trail, as Ryan said, is regional, has a number of other players. They are not on board to construct the trail in 2014. Ideally, that's what we wanted, but right now, they're looking at 2015 for the trail. So that is the two timing, two-stage timing on that. Also, as Ryan pointed out, from the plant, everything east, that is, the two-lane road is being eliminated. We're going to end up with a one-way road for Excel purposes only, and then a separate trail. Again, the timing of that is different than this original reconstruction. So unfortunately, there'll be work occurring down there for the next couple of years. We just couldn't piggyback it all at the same time.
Follow up on that. Thanks, Chris, for the explanation. I guess my, my thought question is that if we are anticipating to expand on the construction, wouldn't that be more economical if you could, if the city could get a bid for the entire construction and then phase it out as needed to get a better, a more economical bid from that possibility?
Absolutely, commissioners, it would. I think the, the obstacle with that is there are different entities involved with each aspect. I believe the trail is, is the Trail Met Council project or possibly a Dakota County project, so more than just the city. And then everything east of the plant is trail and Excel. I don't know that the city's going to be involved with that construction. Ryan, is that?
The trail's not ready to go, and the road has to go now, I would say would be the best description.
Thank you.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Like to open the public hearing at this point. Anybody in the audience, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing nobody, does anybody have any questions specifically for the applicant, or would the applicant like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion between, from the commissioners? None. Hearing none. Can I hear a motion then?
I can make a motion. Chair, I move that the planning commission recommend the city council approval of the conditional use permit for reconstruction of Black Dog Road within the floodplain in the shoreline of the Minnesota River and Black Dog Lake between I-35W and Cedar Avenue with the following one condition. The project shall not result in a loss of flood area storage capacity for the Minnesota River and the Black Dog Lake. This shall be verified by a post-survey at the work of the time of the project completion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bradrick, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passes five zero. Next item on the agenda is, I can get back to that, another public hearing. This one is for an application for independent school district 191 for a conditional use permit amendment to replace the existing stadium scoreboards and a variance to the signage requirements at Burnsville High School located at 600 West Highway 13. Commissioners, or Mr. Slania?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. As indicated, this is an application by ISD 191. The proposal was, would be to replace and enlarge two of the existing scoreboards at the, at the high school. To give you an idea, the size of the campus we're, we're dealing with and some other information, here is the aerial of the site. Highway 13 is here. Portland is here. The property is bound by industrial on all sides. The northwest and east, it is zoned I-1 industrial. It is bound by Highway 13 on the south, and then directly across from Highway 13 is B-3, which is general business. The total site is approximately 56 acres in size. Obviously, we've got the school buildings, we've got the parking lots. The area that we're looking at, I would say on the west side of the facility, is the stadium, the track. We've got practice fields for football. We also have baseball and softball fields along the property to the north. There is also a secondary access to the site off of Riverwood Drive. This is an overflow or athletic event parking as well. The property is zoned R-1. Within that R-1 district, public and private schools are a conditional use permit. Burnsville High School has, has quite the history. As I outlined in the report, it was originally constructed in 56, 57, prior to the city even being incorporated or the zoning ordinance in place. The city and the school district rectified that in 1992. When there was an expansion to the facility, we processed the conditional use permit and addressed those items. Finally, in, I believe it was 1998, the football stadium was reconstructed. Finally, in, I believe it was 1998, the football stadium was reconstructed to what you see today. The, you've got the stadium, the track, the scoreboards, the lights to illuminate the field for all the events that take place. At this time, the applicant is proposing to make changes to the two existing scoreboards at the facility. The first, I'll refer to it as the stadium scoreboard, the second is the practice field. Again, this is the parking lot I referenced for overflow. The tennis courts and the baseball fields are off the page to the north. The, also, again, to put things in perspective, from the frontage road from the Highway 13, frontage or service road, the stadium scoreboard's 600 feet back from the service road. The practice field scoreboard's about 450. That is important to keep in mind as we're talking about the size and the scale of what the applicant is proposing would be a new, the term is live video display monitor. That is this right here. It does say replace existing scoreboard. Actually, what would happen in this situation would be, the scoreboard would come down, the support beams would be replaced, heavier-sized footings, heavier-sized beams to support the weight. The scoreboard would go back up, the video display would be added, and the applicant is proposing additional signage or sponsorship panels to help recoup the cost of the, the project. The intent is for instant replay, player announcements, sponsorship. It will be used for many events throughout the school year and during the summer. It's becoming common among, not all high schools obviously, but other metro high schools are pursuing this type of improvement to their stadium. When staff was looking at this, really the, the biggest obstacle was we're going from a football stadium or a stadium with a scoreboard to now that's something that's going to start incorporating signage, off-premise signage, advertising, things that are, especially off-premise advertising, because we're having sponsors that are not directly tied to the school or the school district in any way. So to combat that, staff's viewing this as part scoreboard, part signage. So you'll see some information here about how often the video display could be used. Staff took a look at the football games, soccer games, lacrosse games, track meets, and so forth, tried to get a handle of how many times, on a maximum possibility, how many times per year this could be used. That was included in your, in your report and a condition that I'll get to at the end. We also put a timeframe as far as prior to the start of the event and following the start of the event. How long or how, how much would we want this running? We certainly understand the need for the high school to operate this. We see it as a benefit and a, an enhancement to the facility. We just want to make sure it is in check and the amount of sponsorship or signage occurring is also in check. That being said, staff also looked at the height of the structure proposed. It is 47 feet to the top point up here. If my memory serves me, to put it in perspective, the video display panel is 13 feet high and 25 feet wide. Again, as you can see, the, the width is the same as the scoreboard, and I believe the scoreboard is eight or 10 feet tall. So they are in, they are in, they are in comparison to each other. The amount of, the total amount of signage, if you will, if you took the whole scoreboard as a sign, would be 1,350 square feet. Again, the sponsorship panels are static, that is not changing. The video display monitor is changing, and the, for the most part, the scoreboard is static and/or changing is not intended as a sponsorship item. There are no changes to the lighting for the site, no, no changes to the landscaping or other changes. We're basically looking at the two scoreboards. In this situation, the practice field, again, sponsorship panels would be added to the existing structure. It does increase in height. As many of you saw, an email from Commissioner Thomas earlier, talking about, you know, the height of signage at the high school or for conditional uses within the R-1 day, R-1 district is 20 feet. These are, both scoreboards as they exist exceed that. We had previously not looked at this as signage, there wasn't any sponsorship. So that's why, from an ordinance standpoint, they're already taller than a sign would be permitted. That is because we didn't view these as signage before. In retros, or in comparison, I know there was a lot of staff discussion comparing this to the new LED billboards that are along 35W. Just as comparison, the max size for those are 750 square feet. I can speak specifically to the new clear channel signs. Those are 100 feet from the driving lanes of 35W. Keep in mind, these are significantly different, not intended for advertising along the interstate as the billboards are. These are, or the stadium is 600 feet from the drive lane of the frontage road and another 85 feet from the drive lane of Highway 13. Certainly, staff had a number of discussions trying to work with the school district, make this a feasible project, but keep the signage and any advertising, advertising in check. Staff has included the following five conditions. The first couple is, the first couple I've addressed before, we're looking at 55 total events where this could be used in a calendar year. That got to all the home games and track meets and so forth. From a staff standpoint, we felt it reasonable to cap the height of the stadium scoreboard so it doesn't exceed the height of the adjacent high school. There are portions of the high school that reach 45 feet, and thus the applicant would have to reduce the, the proposed sign by two feet. Staff felt that was reasonable. Number three, again, limiting the amount the video display was on to 30 minutes prior to and 10 minutes after the event. There was more information as far as the dimensions of the panels and the other information we can certainly go through. Mr. Chair, it is a public hearing. We do have a representative from the school district. Jeff Marshall is the Activities and Athletic Director. I'm sure he'll be able to field some more questions as to how this may be used or limit, additional limitations that, that would be put on this by the district. I know it's something they're excited about, and I know it's something they've been talking about for a couple of years. I will stand for any questions the commission has.
Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Teheri?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, I, I believe you answer most of the questions that I have, but overall, the sets of conditions are, they're not all based on the city ordinance requirements.
No, no, they aren't.
Tell me which ones are and which ones aren't.
Certainly, the last, the last two, whoop, if I can get back to that. The last two are directly tied to, to city ordinance or, or the city code. We understand the need for the display monitor to be live and reactive, but we'd also like to see the, the sponsorship panels or the, the signage to be static around the perimeter. Number five, that's just tied to our building code, getting a permit. The ability to go through the conditional use permit allows the city council to approve this, even, you know, giving some flexibility. We understand that stadiums are a part of a public high school. So we wanted to put parameters around this where it was feasible for both the applicant and the city to, to live with this. We also didn't, we didn't want to be so restrictive where the school district was back to us in two years, asking for more or less events or anything like that. So again, we're trying to, to compromise and find a reasonable solution. Those are certainly up for discussion. If the applicant has concerns or if the, the planning commission has concerns that those are, are too restrictive, we can certainly look at those conditions.
So in case the applicant decide to expand these restrictions, what, what would be, what would the process? For example, if the, if they decide to increase the 55 events, let's say after a year of experiment and as they make some decision, somebody is signing, they, they rather to be in different style or different format or electronic, what, what, what kind of permits or application do they have to go through?
Staff has the ability to look at a 10% increase of the structure, if you will. So if there were, I would consider that very minor changes to either the size of the video display or the size of the scoreboard, that's something staff can do. If it's a specific condition here where it says 55 events and they want 65 or 75, that's out of staff's hands. That would be something that would have to be revisited by the Planning Commission Council. Or we can certainly discuss it tonight also.
Thank you. Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, I'm supportive of this application. I know what stadiums, what role stadiums play in high schools at this time. I mean, I've been part of it and I know about it, so I don't have any problems with that. My concern here is with condition number one, 55 events per calendar year. That's one of my concerns. I think that's a very low bar, 55. You have about six months in the year that high schools or school districts can have events there. I don't know if the school district has any intention of having non-school-related activity at the stadium. If you give them 55, I think it's low. They will not have the, the ability to use the stadiums for other than school events. I think if we, I would strongly suggest to the commission that we recommend go to 65, and then you said, there's what, 10% of movement you have, staff has?
As far as the, the structure, the 10% of the structure, the, the number is something we should pin down, and that would have to be revisited.
Yes, so I'm, I'm suggesting that we raise that to 65 events per calendar year. And that's my first one, Mr. Chair. The second one is item three. The use of video display shall be limited to no more than 30 minutes prior to the start of each event. What do we consider the start of the event? Now, let's say a football game. What is considered the start of that game, of that event?
It would, it would be the, the first kickoff or whatever time the, the game clock starts running.
Well, I'm glad you did explain, thank you for explaining that. Again, I think 30 minutes prior to the kickoff is very limiting. I know home teams need that little extra time to build the spirit and to get the people in attendance, you know, to support the team and the game. And if you just say 30 minutes, I think we are limiting them, you know. I mean, they don't have, if we raise it to 45 minutes, they don't have to use 45.
Correct.
But give them that room that they can start their announcements, they can start their showing previous games and just to get the crowd thing, and I want them to enjoy this, this display and, and this scoreboard. So I'm suggesting that we go to 45 and to go to 15 minutes following the game, following the last ball or whatever, so that they can wrap up and, and close the event. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions for Mr. Selenia from Mr. Teheri?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Teheri.
Chris, what would, what, what is the city concerned if there are no restriction on condition one, three, and four? What would, what would be, what would be the major concern that city wanted to make sure these conditions are set as part of the permit? If you could expand on that.
Certainly, it is, this is somewhat of a new animal for, for Burnsville. Obviously, we have the LED billboards that are recently up, but we've, we've got very, very tight restrictions on those. How fast they can change, how long they need to be static. Certainly, this is something coming from the school district, so we have a level of comfortability, but we're also dealing with some, like a, a live display monitor. Staff doesn't feel this is a, would be necessarily distracting from Highway 13 traffic, but it's going to be something visible from the frontage road, from Highway 13, from properties on the south side of, of Highway 13. We wanted to be possibly more cautious. I certainly understand Commissioner Singh's comments to give them a little more time, and, and that's why staff started conservatively. We feel it would be easier to, to allow additional events or additional time rather than trying to wrangle something back in. Again, this is the, this is the, the first of its kind in town, and we're just trying to gain a comfort level with it.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Chris? I guess I've got a couple of questions based around, maybe in a different direction, more about the sheer size of the sign and advertising. Can you, here's my concern that I'm trying to get my head around, I just need to think about this for a minute. We had a, because this is an R-1 and the school district is a conditional use in R-1.
Correct.
From the sheer size of the sign, if it was two blocks to the east in our, in a, in I-1, we'd tell them no.
Correct.
For the size. And so can you walk me through some kind of the, the staff discussion based on if this sign was this big and it, and it didn't have, if, if the scoreboard was this sheer size and didn't have advertising on it, it was just the display board and the scoreboard, I guess I would look at it differently, but we've denied some people recently with some existing signage and asked them to take it down, not far from here, that was actually, I think, smaller than this. So can you walk me through that discussion and, and how we landed with that?
Absolutely. Commissioners, we'll start with these two comparison photos. The first was really how much of this signage, how much of this scoreboard could be considered signage? Whether it's got the ability to be signage or advertising or... Whether it's got the ability to be signage or advertising or whether it's just part of a feature of the live display. So we took the panels out here, the two anchor panels, the panel on this side in the video display, and that was just under, it was 550, just under 600 square feet of signage. Now that is if, if at halftime or something like that, the only thing that was on the video display was a ad or a sponsorship. So that was the first thing to figure out. Then compared to, compared to one of the billboards that are along the interstate, how does that, how does that come into play? And it is, it is smaller than a billboard. Again, it's, it's more than any single sign, commercial sign would be allowed. But then again, in this situation, it's not on all the time. Even if we gave them 100 events, most of those events are after school nights and weekends, whereas business signs are up and illuminated all the time. Sometimes they go off at midnight, sometimes they're on all night. So it's certainly a different kind of animal. The second was the intent of this, although it's big, it is certainly tied to the stadium. If Burnsville High School wanted to sell advertising, they would have requested that it be moved to the south end of the stadium, closer to Highway 13 and gone that way. In, in this situation, we're a very good distance, a tenth of a mile from the nearest highly traveled road. It is intended for use within the stadium as part of the stadium. If it was in a different location or orientated differently, staff would have, would have had concerns. The other thing, we feel the location here is beneficial rather than if you wanted to eliminate any, any visibility from Highway 13 or from the south, you could move it to the south end of the field, spin it so it faced north. Now you've got a, a huge, a huge structure that's 45 feet tall that's really going to impose then on the aesthetics of Highway 13. So I can say we, we went at this any number of directions, discussing its intended use, why the proposed location was the right fit, some downfall if we ask the applicant to move it or relocate it.
Chris, the partner signage then won't be backlit? You won't be able, the, especially the big ones, that's not frontlit? You won't, realistically, that won't be on during the day or at night for people to see from 13?
It is, it is illuminated. Commissioners, to be honest, I, I don't know the school district's plans. It will be illuminated. I don't know if their intent is to illuminate it 24 hours a day, you know, 365, or if it would be limited to just the, possibly the time that the, the stadium is occupied or the events. We can certainly bring that, bring that up with the applicant.
And you don't believe the partner signage would be legitimately readable from Highway 13?
No. Yeah, I do have, I've been looking in here, I do have the dimensions in there. I believe they're like six by eight. Now, the anchor tenants must be larger than that. Give me one second. Six by eight and a half. And that's the, here we go.
The two, two.
The two anchors. So 50 square feet, they are very high up. They'll be 40 to 45 feet up, but we're also talking about a significant distance where 50 square feet will be difficult. They'll be visible but difficult to read from, from the frontage road. On that note, I do know the, the panels on the practice field are not intended to be illuminated. They are, they are smaller, I believe, four by six, 4.3 by, by six, not illuminated and obviously much closer to the ground than what you're going to see in the stadium.
Any additional, yes, sir, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to follow up on the size, Chris. 300 foot on the existing stadium scoreboard, square feet in the, in the notes.
Okay.
And the additional square footage for signage would be including the video, the live video?
What, what I took, the 1350, is I put a square rectangle around the whole thing. So that is, you know, slightly deceiving, you know, there's, there's a few corners here and here that are, that are out of that. But I did, I did square the whole thing off. Give me one second. I apologize. I do have, I do have the exact calculation on the video display and the sponsorship panels. Okay, so I apologize, the, the video display in itself is 337 square feet. If you took all the, if you took all the anchor panels and advertising panels, you're 233 for a total of 570.
Thank you. So to follow up on that, if I may, can you talk a little bit about the discussion and the applicant's in-game use of the live video display? How they will operate that and what will be going on?
I, I'll let the applicant address that.
We'll come to that.
I don't know how much detail they have yet on it. We'll get into it.
Any discussions about the audio portion of these live displays?
Certainly, there is, there will be audio connected to it. There is one unit, one speaker, connected to this, to the structure. It's intended to cover the whole stadium with, with that one unit. Again, that will be, that will be audible from without, from outside the stadium, surrounding properties. Staff doesn't view that any differently than the current announcement setup that is, again, visible in the neighborhood, or audible in the neighborhood.
I guess one other comment, I guess regarding the restrictions. I guess I have to concur with staff's approach. This is new. Nothing's been done like this in Burnsville before. I like the conservative approach and I think I would support, support that approach.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any additional questions for Mr. Selenia from Commissioners?
I just have a couple of questions then, Chris. The sign permits for when it, when it changes, is it primarily administrative then?
Correct. The review process is staff only and would just be a paper trail.
And then same thing with if I change from, if I change any signage on the approved panels, do those require approval from staff? A sign permit change or do, or not? So you, you still have a little bit of control there?
We do have a little bit of control, primarily to make sure we're not changing the size, very similar to panels on shopping center pylons.
Okay, and then maybe this is a question, I don't know if it's a question for the applicant or you, but on the, on the 55 events, I think you, I think the, the write-up report indicated football, lacrosse, and soccer. I'm assuming it's both males and females. Did it, did it also include any, any spares for assembly? You know, like the, for example, the graduation?
Yes, and certainly, I, I know the applicant may have additional activities that, that we didn't include, but we didn't include, we tried to include all the sports, including track, both male and female. There weren't many add-ons, but I, I think I was at 50 and I rounded up to 55. But again, we're certainly open to that discussion.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Chris. This is a public hearing. Invite anybody from the audience to come and speak up. Please state your name and address. I will also invite the applicant to speak up.
Thank you, my name is Jeff Marshall. I'm the Athletic and Activities Director at Burnsville High School and I am the applicant for this. And appreciate your willingness to listen to this. Like Mr. Selenia said, the, the district is very excited about this, this potential opportunity to be able to put something like this in. And as many of you mentioned, it is something that's new and a couple of neighboring districts have already done this or are working on this, but we really think that it's a unique project for Burnsville and for the school district to, to again, to be able to have the opportunity to do this. So to address some of the questions that, that had come up as I was sitting in the audience, one of the questions was about the, the panels themselves, the sponsorship panels being backlit. And they are backlit, but they will only be backlit during the events while that scoreboard is in use during the day. Obviously, that, you know, you'll, if you're close up, you'd be able to see them, but they won't be backlit at all during the day because the power for, for it is all connected into one. So the whole scoreboard needs to be on in order for the backlit panels to be on as well. Additionally, one of the questions had come up about other events and without a doubt, graduation would be one of those events that we would have this on. I think it's very exciting that every student that goes through Burnsville High School and graduates would at, at some point be able to have the opportunity to see their face up there on that scoreboard and certainly provides mom and dad and grandma and grandpa the, the opportunity when sitting in the audience as well to be able to see them up close as they're receiving their diploma. It does also benefit a number of other non-athletic areas such as the marching band who would also be able to be up there. The dance team as well would also be able to be up there. We do run a number of, our community education program does rent out the stadium to a number of other groups during the course of the summer. And so those events would also be able to be included as well to be able to use that scoreboard. We've had some semi-professional football teams who have used the stadium in the past as well as lacrosse leagues that have used that as well too. So it does benefit other groups coming in from even outside of Burnsville to be able to utilize something like that. Plus it allows community ed, I think, to have an additional piece in terms of being able to rent out the stadium, to be able to go out and try to secure some more groups to be able to do that, that kind of thing as well. I do appreciate as well the, the possibility, the number of events in terms of 55, I think we feel very, very comfortable with. I know that we may have some concerns and we understand the, the conservative approach of the timing piece behind it, especially with football games. Again, a lot of times the actual coin toss is taking place 30 minutes before the game. And so it would be ideal for us to be able to, to put that up there as well so that, you know, the, the video display could, could, could have the coin toss. And so again, we will work within the parameters that were given and, and work with the conservative approach. And ideally, 45 minutes would be great as, as was mentioned before, but that is a piece that I think for us to at least be able to try and see what can happen and to talk to Mr. Selenia down the road if we need to make any sort of adjustments or try to make some changes with that. So one of the questions came up as well, what, what would be on, on that, that board during, during the games? And it allows us to have a live feed that would be up there. It also allows us to have instant replay, allows us to have player stats, allows us to show scores and updates from other games that are happening, allows us to have graphics that are up there as well too. And so there would be some, some graphics that would be displayed during the course of the time. It would allow us at halftime to show interviews with coaches and/or, and/or players. Same with post-game that we could do that. We've talked a little bit with BCTV as well, with working with them and with what they have through BCTV, being able to utilize that on our scoreboard. And the district's got a strong partnership with BCTV. And so we're looking at a lot of the equipment pieces on being able to, to share that and utilize that as well too. And I think that's an important piece where, where we continue with that partnership with the, the local cable television station as well. It will be students, the, we have a number of studio classes and those students will be the ones who will be producing this and running this, running the cameras. They'll be working with the computers up in the press box to put this information up there. And so it offers another opportunity, I think, for our kids who are interested in this and in the studio production area to be able to pursue greater pursuits by utilizing the scoreboard as well too.
Thank you. Any questions from Commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Marshall, thank you for mentioning some of the groups that might be using that, the board. As a former director of community education, exactly that we're thinking about, that there's much more use that can be, have from the scoreboard and the stadium than the school district activities. And it all enhances what goes on in the district. The, with the visibility, when more than parents come in and look at it, then it's Burnsville, Burnsville School District. That's what I was saying, 55 activities can just cover the regular school, the district activities, like football, you know, those things. But I was saying, if you raise it to 65, it gives community education and other groups the ability to come in and be part of this novel idea, this wonderful addition that the school district will be, will be having. So that's, that's the reason, but, but if you're comfortable with 55, I, I will, I'm, I'm okay with that. I was just suggesting that you go a little higher. You don't have to meet 65, you don't, but it gives you the room rather than coming back to staff and working with staff to raise it, you know. And again, you rightly said the 30 minutes prior to the kickoff should go a little higher, 45 minutes. And to wrap up after the, the last ball is thrown, to wrap up 10 minutes is, you can't get even, crowd can't, wouldn't leave in 10 minutes. So you go a little 15 minutes, that was my recommendation.
And we certainly appreciate that. And, you know, again, we, we want to work within the parameters that the commission and the city council lay out for us and we're willing to do that. 55 events does include some of the events that are already in the stadium that, that community ed does rent out. So the 55, so community ed would be able to benefit from the 55 events now. We certainly would, we're not going to turn down 65, 70, 75 events, that's for sure. And that does open up the door for us to be able to, to utilize the stadium more and to bring more events and activities into the stadium. So, but again, you know, we want to work within, within whatever parameters are given to us.
I commend District 191 for doing this. I think it's great. It adds so much to the learning experience in the school district and the visibility of the district to other people, you know, within the metro community.
Thank you.
Any additional, Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the live feed, will you be selling advertising on that live feed or is that all?
There is the opportunity for, for a level of sponsorship to purchase a live feed on there. Yep. And there's, there's two approaches that we may be looking at that. One would be just, again, the, the graphics that would be able to come up on there. The other would be the potential for, for a type of commercial that could go up on there at halftime as well too.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from Commissioners?
Mr. Marshall, do you have in your head the sheer number of times that stadium is used in a calendar year for an event?
For an event? Yeah, it's, that 55 number is, is pretty close to, to accurate. Now, you know, sometimes there's an event, for example, we've hosted a soccer tournament there in the summer, that might be a multi-day event, you know, so that might count as one. So that, you know, when you're talking the number of 55 times, you know, if that was strictly looking at days or evenings, you know, then that might limit it a little bit somewhat because of that. But I, I would say, you know, again, 55, 55 is, is probably fairly accurate in terms of events. Now, again, we, we host summer camps out there. We host, you know, the lacrosse comes in and rents this field for some camps and some games and those, that's not included in there because the current scoreboard right now isn't used for a lot of those events. So the, the stadium itself is used every day, you know, from now until November.
Okay. Any additional questions from Commissioners for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any additional comments or questions from the public? Public hearing is still open? Public hearing is now closed. I'd like to hear comments from Commissioners, Commissioner Tary?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My, my feeling and the opposite of my fellow Commissioners are, I, I personally believe with cities setting conditions, one, three, and four, especially one and three, the city put itself in a, in a position... city setting conditions, 1, 3, and 4, especially 1 and 3, the city puts itself in a position of, if you will, a micro-managing these conditions. I'm sure the operation managers are very well capable to determine how to adjust the timing, especially the timing of condition 1 and 2. And my question is, has the city come up with these timing based on any study or a request from the applicants or a study with other schools versus leave the conditions open and let's the operation manager determine how to use, the use of these events and even increasing the revenue for the school for advertising if needed. And especially some of the signs are not very visible, like this backlit sign from the highway. So, I'm personally against to be conservative on condition 1 and, especially 1 and 3 when it comes to the timing of use of these equipments.
Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I must say that I'm very supportive of my fellow commissioner Taheri. I think we are micro-managing the school district when we even ask them what activities are listed to be put on the scoreboard and in the stadium. That's, I mean, I trust that the school district knows what they're doing and I don't care to know if they're going to only have football and marching band up there. They know what they're going to do and I agree with Commissioner Taheri that why do we tell them 55? If they want to have 100 within the time limit, as long as they follow the rules, I mean, that's good for them. I don't think we should be telling them that they need to have 55 or 65 or 75. Leave it open and let them use it. We agree if the commission recommends and the city council approves for them to have this scoreboard of that size, so be it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments from other commissioners? Here, oh, sorry. You're ready? I can, I'll go if you want to.
Okay, go ahead.
Collect your thoughts a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Slania, it appears that you've worked with the applicant to put the number of events, the applicant is stating that the number of events per year now is 55 and it's pretty close to that. I can understand that and the applicant doesn't seem to have a problem. The time, did you work that also out with the applicant?
No, commissioners, that, the time was something that came up last minute on a staff level, something I hadn't thought of previously until we had a staff meeting last week. So, that is new. And again, we certainly want to put some parameters in place. We don't want to be so restrictive where the school district is back either this year or in two years asking for some adjustments. So, I think if it is, if it's reasonable based on what you're hearing from the applicant to adjust the timing on condition 3, I think that's certainly reasonable. Same with, same with condition 1. Staff, we needed a place to start and that's what you see in the staff report.
Okay, thank you. From, I guess from my point of view, I don't really have a problem with any of the conditions. My thoughts are is the time could be extended a little bit, but the applicant seems fine with the 55. He might do this, people see the nice sign. It might cause like the Burnsville Fire's championship soccer game to be at that stadium with the video, everything. So, they might have opportunities where, you know, where they didn't, where the 55 is insufficient. But I think they plan this year to year and I think they'll see it coming. So, I don't necessarily have a problem with any of the conditions and I have to give credit to staff and the applicant to thinking it through and coming up with some numbers that the applicant doesn't appear to have a strong problem with. And so, I don't know that it's for, given the roughly hour that we've been thinking about it, that we should override both staff and the applicant in their opinions. If they, my feeling is if the applicant really had a problem with it, he would have said so here. So, for me, I'm in favor of the conditions as they stand and one of the reasons I agree with staff for going with the more conservative approach to begin with is, is we tend to lean, my viewpoint is, as long as I've been on the commission, is we tend to lean, to be very lenient towards public institutions or I will say quasi nonprofit institutions. And sometimes when you're looking at something like this, you don't know what the unintended consequences will be. There was something approved in my neighborhood. I won't get into the details, but I wasn't here for the meeting and it's causing problems for my neighborhood and it's because of unintended consequences. I support staff's position here. I think they're easing into it. It is something new. The applicant is obviously satisfied with what staff has put up and I think they are meeting a good compromise to give the applicant what he needs and also put some controls on this. I mean, if there were no controls, they could leave that video blaring 24/7. And I don't think anybody would want that, especially if you lived in the neighborhood. So, I'm in favor of the conditions as they stand. Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I listened and I understand what you're saying. Staff and the applicant worked together, made, brought an application before us. We are here as commissioners to look at it and come up with our wisdom, come up with something that is right. I'm not saying that what they put before us is wrong. What I'm saying is, if you, if we are going to tell the school district that you can have 55, it will be in writing, it will be 55 activities in the stadium using the scoreboard per year, I don't think we are doing the right thing. I can understand item 3 where, you know, if you don't give them some guidelines, they can have the scoreboard light on and music there or advertisement going all day or all night. But that one I can understand. But the first one, when you, we're going to tell them that you can't have more than 55 activities per year, I don't think that's right. The school district is an august body. I have great respect for the school district and the administration and I think they will do what's right. Now, we are not going, I don't agree with us telling them how many activities they should have there. With all due respect, sir, I don't agree with that. I can understand items, condition 3, but not condition 1.
Commissioner Thomas, I thought I saw your hand.
All right, thank you. First of all, I'd like to say I'm in favor of this whole concept. I see the need for a video scoreboard. I see the need for sponsorship to help pay for activities, pay for the scoreboard. And I think there'll be a wonderful solution here. I don't know if what we have before us today is the right solution. And my reservations are based on, I drove by there today and I looked at the scoreboard that exists. It's a beautiful scoreboard. It doesn't meet your needs, I understand that. It sits well back from the highway, not obtrusive. You can read it from the highway. Proportionately, it fits really well. From a technical point of view, we're asked to review this application and I'm looking at the proposed sign and video screen and sponsorship. And my real reservation is from a technical point of view, the sheer size of it and the height is my number one concern. 47 feet high proposed, 45 on conditions versus 28 foot allowed in an industrial area, 20 feet, I believe, allowed in this current zoning. It's just huge. And that height leads to what, in my opinion, is a disproportionate scoreboard. I mean, I look at that thing and I would hope that others might look at it and share my opinion. I don't know if they do or not, but it looks disproportionate. It just doesn't look, doesn't look good. And I think there's a better solution here. And I guess, I don't know what that is, I wasn't part of the process. I don't want to criticize what got you here, but I just, from my point of view, I think I step back to look at that and just really study it and say, we'll be proud of that in five years, we'll be, we'll be proud of that in 10 years. And because it is a big part of our community, what happens at the school, the young children that we educate. So, I think that's an important part for me. So, I'm supportive of the concept. Again, I'm supportive of the conditions. I like the conservative approach. I had concerns about the audio, but the location and the surrounding uses, I think the audio is kind of a non-factor. But I would encourage us to maybe step back and look at the sheer size of the stadium scoreboard at 47 feet, how it interferes with proportions and how it's really going to look sitting back there. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Commissioners, I agree to a certain extent. I think that I'm pretty excited about this as an opportunity to create some excitement around the stadium. You go to a stadium today that has this type of screen, it's a real positive event. I too struggle with the sheer size of the sign. We always try to, I realize that the school district is not part of the city, but we, when we review stuff that the city does, we try not to make big variances between what we would approve for the public and what we would approve for the city. And the 47 feet size really bothers me to a certain extent. If the application had come in front of us that there was two separate signs, there was the scoreboard and then that was at its standard height and here is the video display board with the advertising and how did that fit into our requirements for signage? I guess I would have felt a little better about it. This just seems way outside of the box from what we've approved in the past. With that said, the first condition, I believe whether there's an event in the stadium or not, the school should be able to use it. So, I would, I guess I would say that the first condition shall be limited to if there's an event, or I'm not sure how we would word that. That gets back to my point to, Chris, when you talked about a business having a sign up 24/7, I don't believe that this should be on 24/7 as an advertising piece if there's not an event. So, I can see that it could be limited to if there's an event in the stadium, whatever that event is. And I also believe that person discussion, if you're going to also limit the use of it where a business sign is up 24/7, I do think 30 minutes in the beginning is a little restrictive, so maybe 60 minutes and then 30 minutes after because his point about, you know, doing some interviews with the players in 10 minutes, you're not going to be able to get there. But the sheer size of the sign and the amount of variance that we're giving really bothers me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Taheri?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a response or follow-up on Commissioner Bradrick and Commissioner Singh, both comments. In response to Commissioner Bradrick on the signage side, I think in this case, city concerned about the economic portion of this project, whether to use partially existing sign and then elaborate it to more modern and up-to-date signage. So, their choice was very limited in order to, perhaps to be saving money and combine these two. If that is the reason, then I accept it. I support that. Follow, Commissioner Singh, as far as the restriction on the condition, I personally, I, especially condition 3, I think is extremely micromanagement item. 30 minutes here, 10 minutes after. For the establishment that have been part of this city for the last 50, 60 years or so, to me, it is a little embarrassing to tell them 30 minutes before or 10 minutes after, or you cannot do 35 or you cannot do 15. I think that restriction could be, in my opinion, should be completely eliminated and as well as restriction 1. And restriction, the condition 4, I'm not sure exactly what that restricts the school to do or not to do. If by doing that would distract the games or public or traffic or other use, I think we should be more, look into it more detail. If that condition 4 was, would restrict the school by creating more revenue and exposure, then we should look at that in more detail, in my opinion. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Taheri. Okay, we've got a lot of opinions. We don't have a lot of consensus. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Slania about some rules here because this is a little bit of an anomaly for us typically. As far as consensus building and potential modifications to the conditions as listed, how open are we to discuss those here and what we think we might all be able to live with?
Certainly. Well, two things to keep in mind. One is, recommendation needs to be formulated and the vote, you know, needs to occur. The vote does not necessarily need to be, how do I want to say this? You don't necessarily need a positive recommendation. We just need a majority, which would be three of the five, to move the project to the city council, whether that's for approval with conditions or denial or anything in between. You still need the three of the five to move it onto the city council or maybe something, request the applicant revisit a few things and then bring it back in a couple of weeks. Again, that would need three of, three of five. I would say flexibility is, on items 1, 2, and 3 are really, or excuse me, 1 and 3 and 4 are really at your discretion. Yeah, those are not necessarily connected to the ordinance, whether those are eliminated or revised completely, that is, that is up to the planning commission's discretion. Again, the basis of the conditional use permit is that we're, the city's approving something that's reasonable in that zoning district. Here, it's a, it's part of a stadium tied to a high school and the planning commission and council have the ability to put reasonable conditions on that to help protect the health, safety, and well-being of the neighbors. And that's really what we're doing. There is, as we talked about, this is the first of its kind. There are no parameters on this, very, unlike the billboards that can tell you exactly how big it can be and how much it can change and when and who gets to advertise on. We don't have that tool here. So, that's where staff came up with these conditions.
Thank you, Chris. And just to point a clarity on some things you said, we can move it forward to city council whether we, whether we recommend approval or whether we recommend deny.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. And then, just one other point of clarity with respect to rules. How open can we be in the discussion? So, if I were to say I could support 65 events and get some, you know, can we go through the, can we try to build consensus?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
Yes, we can.
Yes, that's what I was about to say. We can talk about that.
Okay.
We can come to consensus or majority on each one of these, each one of the conditions.
All right, let's break it down, condition by condition, try to build consensus if we can. Let's go with condition one, which is the limit of 55 events per year. Applicant said they'd take whatever they could get. Staff proposed 55. Commissioner Singh proposed 65 earlier in the meeting.
Or remove it altogether.
Or remove it completely.
My preference is that we remove item, condition one altogether.
And Commissioner Bradrick, again, said, suggested no definite, no limit on the number of events, but whenever there is an event. So that's what's been stated. I'll state my position. I'm okay with the 65. I'm not okay with no limit, because I would rather take a conservative approach. And I think it would be very difficult to define event. Who's to say gym class, third-hour gym class, that could be an event?
I agree with you, Mr. Chair. That's the reason why we should not have 55, 65, 75, or 85. It's a school district event.
Well, no, there's a reason for this here, and I don't believe the reason as stated is for a third-hour gym class. So...
What if they want to have a third-hour gym class?
What if the public surrounding that doesn't want to have the third?
We have not heard about that. We heard it, the scoreboard, the scoreboard is so many feet away from Highway 13 and from residential property. That's what we were told.
Okay. Mr. Singh wants no limit, or excuse me, Commissioner Singh wants no limit. Commissioner Thomas?
My preference would be 55. I could support 65.
Commissioners Tarey?
No limit.
No limit. Commissioner Bradrick?
I would support no limit.
Okay, we have three no limits there. Okay. And two are fine at 65. Okay. Item two, we did not really discuss item two, other than size, and two Commissioners, well, maybe not, maybe I don't have this right. Commissioner Thomas is concerned about the height. Commissioner Bradrick agrees with, oh, excuse me, I'm not sure about the, I said agrees with Thomas, but let's just hear, I think...
I agree with Commissioner.
Okay, so we have two Commissioners concerned about the overall size of the sign. Do any of the other Commissioners?
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so three, okay with size. Two against. Okay, item number three, limit to 30 minutes before the start of event and no more than 10 minutes after completion event. I'll state my opinion. For me personally, I am, I am okay with extending that a little bit around each one, and I would actually encourage extending it, because I think, for me, I don't know about front side, but backside, 10 minutes, you got, you can't get out of the stands in 10 minutes. So I think it'd be a good, a good opportunity to have post-game interviews, or I just think it could be real kind of useful for the, for post-game type activities.
45 and 30.
And Commissioner Singh suggests 45 and 30. Are, is...
I support that.
I believe the managements are experienced enough to determine on their own, no limit.
I can support the 45 and 30.
45 and 30? Okay, so we have four for 45 and 30. And Chris, if I'm breaking any laws by doing it this way, you got to tell me, because I don't know.
This is fine.
Okay. Sponsorship panels, nobody really voiced too much against that, other than overall size. So let's, so we've already discussed the size a little bit. As far as those panels go, I think Commissioner Tarey had some concerns about what is on those panels. I, my understanding is they're like cabinet signs, they're going to be backlit, the backlighting will only occur during the events, not at other times, but the signage would still be visible, the color, you know, the lettering color versus whatever the background color is. Can people support the signage as stated, or I should say that condition as stated? And I'll just restate it for everybody. The sponsorship panels on both scoreboards shall be static. No scrolling, flashing, continuous movement, or other motion shall be permitted. So, and what they're proposing really is static and backlit. Does anybody have problems with that?
I don't see myself, any reason that condition should be part of this application in case, let's say after a year or two, the school decide, well, by the way, we experienced, experienced that or experimented, we decided to go the other way.
But that would be...
So why don't we just have, leave it open and let them decide, or at least experience, experiment what is best for them or events and so forth? So I, again, I think that condition is very restrictive and need to be eliminated.
Mr. Chair? Yes, sir. You want to comment on?
Mr. Chair, right now, we don't allow flashing, continuous movement signs anywhere in our zoning ordinance. And I think, I think the staff is just reiterating, so it's on the record for this application. It's not something that's allowed within the city for private signage or public signage.
And also, I believe, if what they're proposing now has, if they don't like it in the future, they're going to have to come back here anyways to propose something different, because it would be a physical change to the sign. So you have that control. Everybody appears happy with it. I don't, I don't, and again, as Mr. Brusia says, is there, it's just reiterating existing code. So Commissioner Tarey has a problem with that? Do any of the other Commissioners? I hear none. So that, so sign types appears okay? And the last one, separate sign permits, nobody spoke to that. I think that's, that's, there's no disagreement with that. So I'll summarize real quick what I heard. We have three Commissioners that can support no limits on the number of events. We have three Commissioners that are okay with the size. We have four Commissioners that are okay with 45 minutes prior and 30 minutes after for that condition. And then I believe we have four Commissioners that are in agreement with condition four, which speaks to the sign types. I think I summarized it. We've gone through it.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think all we need to do is to renumber them. There will be no, number one, there will not, we don't need it.
Right, do we, do we need, do you want further discussion, or you would like further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I do, I love the concept. I think this is needed. I do have a real problem with the size of the sign. And I would encourage my fellow Commissioners to take my comments under consideration. Consider tabling this application and ask the applicant to come back with something that's not so high. Commissioner Bradrick's comment about possibly two different signs has some merit, and I would like to see us to pursue that.
Chair, I appreciate you kind of outlining our differences. I do think...
I outlined the consensus.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. I do think that our role here is, in many cases, we've kind of done our role. We've, the city council will ultimately make this decision. I think we should have a motion. The up-and-down vote would be for, regardless of our up-and-down vote, it does go to the city council. I do think that if we have a 5-0 vote, it goes to the consent agenda. Typically, if it's not a 5-0, it goes on the regular agenda, so they will have discussions. They have heard our thoughts, and they can make a decision from there. They're the elected body.
Okay, and I agree with you, Commissioner. What I'm trying to get is a, we were all over the place on every topic, and different people aligned with different people. So what I'm hoping to do is put together, hear a motion with the conditions modified per the consensus that I believe we partially achieved, and then vote on that. If people prefer to vote on the conditions as presented, I'm open to that too. And what would, what would my fellow Commissioners like to do?
Mr. Chair, I'll move the motion, and, you know, before it's seconded, you can have any amendment to it, friendly amendment. Is that okay?
Okay, with no further, if no further discussion, can we hear a motion from Commissioner Singh?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I move that the planning commission recommends the city council approval of the conditional use permit amendment to replace the two existing scoreboards and the variance to the signage requirements at Burnsville High School, located at 600 West Highway 13, with the following four conditions. One, the height of the scoreboard shall be limited to 45 feet, and not, as not to exceed the height of the school building. Two, the use of video displays shall be limited to no more than 45 minutes prior to the start of each event, and no more than, is it 30? 30 minutes following the completion of the event. Three, the sponsorship panels on both scoreboards shall be static. No scrolling, flashing, continuous movement, or other motion shall be permitted. And four, separate sign permits are required prior to installation.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Tarey? Any more discussion prior to putting it up for a vote? Hearing none? All in favor of recommending to the city council the motion as stated by Commissioner Singh with the four modified conditions as stated by Commissioner Singh? Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, aye?
Aye.
Passes three to two for recommendation to city council for approval?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, this is going to the, would go to the city council at their meeting next week, Tuesday, April 22nd.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Thank you for listening to our long... Pardon, no, there's, unless, other than with staff, prior to council, if you choose...
We can certainly catch up and prep for the council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Final item on the agenda, actually, Chris, I don't know that I officially closed the public hearing there.
Yes, you did.
I did, okay, all right, thank you. All right, item number five on the agenda is a work session to review the I-1 district zoning uses and conditional use permits.
Commissioners, I'm not going to ask you to make any recommendations tonight on this issue. This is a workshop.
Thank you.
This is a workshop. If you recall, at our February meeting, we recently amended the I-1 district to include sports training facilities as a conditional use within that district. As we looked at that zoning district, we discovered that we have a full array of uses that may not be appropriate within our industrial districts. We also had some inquiries about some additional uses that might be appropriate within the districts. And we're always looking at, how do we keep our zoning districts or industrial districts vital? What uses are appropriate? How can we encourage more users? What are the user needs or lease, lessors interested in providing? And who are they catering? As part of this, we had an opportunity to talk with Lindville Properties. That's not included in your report, but they brought us some additional insights. So this workshop tonight, and I'll try to keep it brief after that long discussion, is we're trying to achieve a couple of goals. First of all, we examined all the uses within each of our industrial districts. We have some specific recommendations for the planning commission to consider. Secondly, if there's ideas that you have for additional uses that should be put in within the variety of zoning districts we have for industrial, to make them more marketable, that's another component. Initially, we looked at just the I-1 district, which is our, a geographically defined district north of Highway 13. And that area is one of our older districts, has proposed industrial district to provide for the establishment warehouse, light industrial, and large truck traffic elements. And understanding what that purpose statement is, I'll go over the individual uses a little later. The next thing was the I-2, which is our more heavy industrial district, has a full-scale of light industrial, but heavy industrial manufacturing requires a degree of isolation. When we talk about industrial districts, when we talk about isolations, it's not just from residential uses. It may be from our commercial uses. So we don't have issues as far as noise, emissions, odors, those kind of things that may conflict with the enjoyment of a shopping experience or a living experience. That's why we look for this industrial component. And frequently, we always think about what the industrial will do to that lower intensity use, but frequently, we have to protect that, that industrial use from the encroachment from lower intense, so they can operate in an unencumbered fashion, so they continue to do business, so they continue to manufacture and produce. We also have the I-3, which is your office industrial park, which is intended to be a high-quality industrial park, higher income. We have the Gateway Medium Density, Medium Density Residential, or excuse me, Industrial, which is along our river area. These are intended to be uses without a lot of outdoor activities, outdoor storage. And then we have the Gateway Heavy Industrial Uses, which will include some of the heavier industrial arrangements. When we looked at the zoning districts, we discovered that all the B or business districts rolled into our industrial districts as conditional use permits. And this really raised a number of concerns in that our industrial districts are intended to be for manufacturing, heavy industrial, if need to be operating. And they do require a degree of isolation or separation from these uses to allow them to operate unencumbered. When we looked at the I-1 district, we find that this is still predominantly a warehouse district, a lot of contractors' yards. There is some need for some retail for sale of individual products produced or offered on-site. But we did look at the variety of tenants and office types that are within that area. This raised some of the concerns as far as the B-1, B-2, B-3 uses falling in here. We have some uses, like the art studio, decorating studio, photographic studios, that we believe can coexist within the I-1, I-2 district. In fact, we don't see them as being so outrageous that they need to be a conditional use permit. So we're recommending that that be changed from a conditional to a permitted use and not require a review through planning commission and council. Additionally, when we have contractors' yards that are all within doors, everything within the building, that's just a tenant change. We're suggesting that go to a permitted use. We're talking about retaining accessory car washes, accessory structures, antennas, bus terminals, all as conditional uses within the district. When we get to contractors' yards with outdoor storage, the outdoor storage is going to trigger that conditional use permit. So we can limit the size, we can cause screening, we can identify the types of storage that's going to occur, and that should go through planning commission and council. Essential services, we think that should remain firearms, heliports, kennels. Frequently, I'm seeing more and more doggy daycare and kennels going in industrial areas. And one of the things that we want to make sure that, especially if they're going into a multi-tenant building, that there is sanitation concerns, sealing the floors, sealing the walls, maybe separate air exchange, and that type of arrangements, so that whatever's happening next door does not contaminate the next-door process. Medical waste, we're going to keep in the, in the I-1 district and I-2 district, terminals. When we get to these municipal buildings, we're still retaining these conditional uses. But then when we get to uses that are assembly-type uses, and I'll get to that area. We have a number of assembly uses that are currently allowed within the district, armories, religious institutions, for paternal organizations, bowling alleys, electronic game rooms, billiard halls, drive-in theaters. halls, drive-in theaters, funeral homes, nursing homes, and museums are all listed as conditional uses in our I district, I-1 district. I want to be very clear that bringing our living environment into our industrial district works totally contrary to our intended purpose, and we believe that those should be removed. Additionally-
Can we ask-
Yes, please, go ahead.
I noticed you have like originating district B-1 for funeral homes and mortuaries.
Yes.
And you, they can get into anyone, B-1, B-2, B-3, even the I-1?
Yes, I-1 and I-2. And we're recommending that they be eliminated.
Okay.
See, this is our recommendation through here.
Yes.
These assembly uses, we don't believe are going to be compatible with our intended manufacturing warehousing purposes. And our recommendation is that they would be removed as conditional uses within that district.
I'm glad.
The other element that I'm seeing a lot of is that any place we allow assembly uses, we fall into the Religious Land Use and Institutional Persons Act, which basically allows a church to enter into any zoning district that would allow assembly-type uses, specifically like fraternal halls or convention centers. And some judges have even gone as far as saying if you allow a theater there, you would allow a church there, church assembly. Our I-1 district is very similar to a lot of other communities that have mature, older areas, and these areas are not as appealing, so their rent rates are affordable, and they're very appealing to churches. In some of my other communities, the concern is not so much as a leased tenant, but if they became ownership, they would lose industrial tax base in favor of a nonprofit arrangement. So in that respect, we are strongly encouraging that these assembly uses may not be appropriate from a land use perspective, but also from a standpoint of maintaining industrial tax base. We'd not like them to fall into the Rupla Act. So you can see that what we're suggesting here, from armories down to nursing homes, we're suggesting that those be removed as conditional uses. And in that respect, that would give us those protections. We'd also take out religious institutions, sports arenas, the bowling alleys. We're also suggesting that the term gymnasium be removed from the bowling alley definition in the B-3 district, just because they'll fall into either a health club or a sports training facility, and that way, we have those things defined, we have those things controlled, but we didn't have a definition of gymnasium. Then we also have some retail components. We have liquor stores, restaurants, retail as principal use, taverns, nightclubs, theaters, and thrift stores. If you recall our thrift store discussion, thrift stores have an industrial component to it as far as the receipt of goods, the processing of goods, the disposal or recycling of goods that are not going to go to the store. So in that respect, those should continue along the lines of a conditional use permit. But introduction of a retail liquor store within your I-1 or I-2 district, it doesn't fit. And quite frankly, we want them in our commercial zones, so why would we give them the opportunity to maybe dilute our industrial areas? So our recommendation in those retail components is, let's keep them in the business zoning districts, and let's remove them from our industrial districts. Yes?
Mr. Brickus, what does the C-7 mean on retail sales there?
This one here?
Yeah, I think it's a C-7.
That's a C question mark.
A C question, oh, okay.
Okay, a couple of things, there's two issues here. In talking with Linville, we want to keep some retail accessory, so that if we have a manufacturing or a service provider, let's say a garage door, a garage door repair company, if they would fit our industrial district, they're contractor, most of, they do a lot of the work, but they may have a list of product lines that they're selling in addition to their services. That accessory retail, according to Linville, is critical for to keep their, these I-1, I-2 districts vital. And we agree with that. So we think accessory retail is appropriate, as long as it's related to the industry that it's serving, and it's going to be limited in size. Right now, you allow up to twenty percent of building or eight hundred fifty square feet. Quite frankly, we'd like to change the eight hundred and fifty square foot hard cap and maybe give some arrangement or some flexibility in that. I think we're going to go up to a thousand. And then if it's over a thousand, then it becomes a conditional use permit. So accessory retail under the twenty percent or a thousand square feet would be just a permitted use. If it went over that, then it would be a conditional use. We also have, within our zoning district, this 1023-3, retail as a permitted use. And the way it's currently written, it's a facility that's five thousand square feet in a multi-tenant building, or ten thousand square feet or greater in a freestanding building. Again, it raises the question, do we want to bring that customer traffic into our industrial zones? Does that really fit? We think that that fits better in our business zoning districts, and we should have principal use retail removed from the I. But I raise that as a question mark because I wanted to have this discussion with you tonight.
Thank you.
So, was it, yeah, C-7. Moving on, you can see that we currently allow theaters and other things as a permitted use, but we're really thinking that some of these should be taken out, drive-through facilities, transient merchants. Transient merchants in most of my other communities are not even listed as a land use. They're listed as a business license. So if you have a transient land use, transient sales, they come in and they get a business license, and it might be a lender's garden, maybe it's a special event type of arrangement, and they can operate for a certain period of time. Transient merchants may also be door-to-door vacuum salesmen, but we get them licensed and they can operate within the city. We don't believe transient should be in your zoning ordinance, except maybe a special event if it's going to be on a site. And it shouldn't be a conditional use permit, because a conditional use permit typically is an approval that runs with the land, and it really does not fit within that component, because transient means it's going to be there and it's going to be gone, and we may not want the next person just to pick up on that conditional use permit. Veterinary clinics with outdoor dog runs, we're suggesting that be removed. Then we have our conditional use permits within the I-2 district. Some of the other new uses that we're looking at, within their industrial district, we currently allow daycares as a conditional use permit within our industrial districts. And that's not atypical of most communities, because we'd like to have our daycares in close proximity of the employment base, so if they can drop off their kids, they can, it's a convenient service. I don't know if we want adult daycare to be included in that. Right now, we don't have, your definition of daycare is age-restricted to children. And adult daycare, I don't know if we want to have them treated identical to child daycare. So that's another discussion item as to their appropriateness within an industrial zoning district. Data calls, okay?
Can I jump in on that?
Yes.
Thinking about this since last week, do we run into a similar situation? Can daycare, could daycare be considered assembly? Do we want to eliminate that, just like we're eliminating some of the other assembly?
I think, I don't think daycare is necessarily going to be treated as assembly, because it's more of a service business and it's age-restricted.
Okay.
And so I don't see that as an assembly kind of arrangement. If you look at the Rupla information, most of the times, they're talking about clubs, greeting halls, those type of assembly areas, convention centers, banquet centers, those type of things, where it's infrequent collection or assembly of people. There's some rule of thumb that a theater would not be treated as the same assembly as a church, just from the standpoint that it's a constant day-to-day operation, where assembly, but in most cases, I try to be very cautious in the way I present that.
Thank you.
Mr. Brickus, why do we differentiate between I-1 and I-2 for the adult daycare and the data call center?
The I-1 is a, for the adult daycare, I-1 is supposed to be a lower-intensity land use, where I-2 is our heavy industrial land use. And just from the standpoint, if we're going to allow them in any industrial district, it'd probably be, now that I look at it, it'd probably be the I-1 and maybe the I-3 and the GM, G-I-M, so they're less intense zoning districts. When we start talking about our I-2 district, we're talking about, that's where we get down and dirty as far as the type of production that we would allow. And so it would include acid manufacturing, junkyards, those type of things, explosions. So I don't think we want to put them in there. And even, I want to be honest with you, Commissioner, adult daycare, even in the I-1, is something that I think we need to have a discussion, and you have to tell me. I know I don't think that really fits that purpose. We've been getting a lot of calls about data centers. We thought about whether they should be defined separately, or do they just fit within our general office definition? Call centers are generally cubicles filled with telephones, and people are, I don't really think they have a differentiation or land use differentiation from a general office use, so I think it could fit within that broader definition. A couple of other ideas that we had is that we have restaurants or cafeterias associated with manufacturing, they're not specifically allowed. We would like to list them as a permitted accessory use, as long as they're serving the people within the building.
That's not open to the public.
It would not necessarily be open to the public, but in the past, when we had offices with cafeteria, it wouldn't be unusual to see guests being served, so, but we wouldn't really get into it, but it's generally intended to serve the people within the building, and it's not out or not advertised beyond-
No exterior signage.
Yes. Here's our retail, retail up to a thousand square feet accessory, we'd make that accessory use rather than a conditional use. Retail over a thousand square feet would become a conditional use permit. We have had a lot of inquiry lately of indoor food production, and what I'm talking about is hydroponics, aquaponics, insect farming, those type of things, and we believe that we should make room for, within our districts, to accommodate them.
Worm farming.
Worm. We don't want to get into a situation where, the issue is, is how far do we take this? Do we think, if we think insects are fine, what about chickens? If chickens are fine, what about pigs? Pigs are fine, what about-
Goats.
You know, we would have to kind of try, we think we should give some attention to that, because it's becoming very, very popular. The hydroponics, aquaponics, I've discovered a lot of times, they are linked from the standpoint of, you can grow crops, you can use the water, you can recycle the water from the hydroponics to fertilize and water the plants from your fish growing, so, and they have to circulate that water, just to keep the feces or other waste from contaminating the water and becoming polluted in that fashion. But I think those are some great opportunities, and I don't think we want to turn our backs on those opportunities. But we do think that they are different enough in manufacturing, that they don't really fit the manufacturing entitlement. So tonight, gentlemen, we look for your ideas. If you agree with some of our ideas, I think we will start maybe putting ordinances together, but we're also looking for any things that we may have missed as far as other uses you think are appropriate, or if we missed a target on any of these things, we'd look for your comments.
Just on that last one, the food production?
Yes.
Conditional now, don't we have over in, over just south of 42, that's food production there, but it's not as, I guess, exotic as what you were suggesting? They're manufacturing-
Powders.
Food inputs, basically.
Yes. If they're receiving, if they're receiving raw materials and then just processing them and putting them into a food product, I think we're looking at this as almost, rather than food production, almost like internal farming. I think that's how we make the distinction, because if someone was taking raw products and baking cookies, and we would treat that as different production than what we're looking at here.
Oh, and that was just my, more my comment to create that nuance or differentiation or-
Maybe food production's not the correct term, maybe it's, we had to find a term.
First of all, I'd like to let you know that I did my homework.
Yes, you showed me.
I have a list of possible businesses that I would like your comment on. And under food manufacturing, I'm thinking, recently, there was a big problem in Texas, where the pepper, some kind of factory that was bottling or canning pepper, which caused a problem for the neighborhood. Where would you put something like that?
Well, if it's, it depends on which pepper they're processing.
The hot one.
Those are things, those are things that we'd have to take a look at, as far as, you know, it might be, it might, I think it'd be totally appropriate within our industrial zoning districts, it's just what conditions you put on it. It probably is just a matter of making sure that there's a filtering system, so that there's no emissions going out that would cause people to, that would act like tear gas.
Would that be more than I-2?
Well, I think it could fit I-1, I-2, it's just a matter of, I think we already have some rules in our ordinance that state that you can't, we have emission controls, we have orders, we have other components. It's a matter of the introduction of this type of use, what are the possible negatives? Do we have to push it beyond just a permitted use into a conditional use process? We can take a look at that. Some of the issues we had in, with, in the Twin Cities is just, you know, coffees that want to roast and grind their own coffees, and the odors in the neighborhood. Quite frankly, if one located close to me, I would think it was very pleasurable, but some people find it offensive, so we have to work, make sure that we-
My next one is bakeries.
Yes.
Where would we accommodate a bakery?
Well, right now, we would allow bakeries in our industrial zone, if there is a full production bakery, or if it's a retail bakery, there's-
No, production bakery.
We would allow them in our I-1 and I-2 zoning districts right now.
Okay. We don't, I don't think we have this, but tattoo parlors?
Those are commercial.
So that goes in-
Into a B zoning district.
What if you're just lining people up and just doing production on them?
Still, we want those, we don't want, we don't want that customer traffic traveling into our industrial zones, so.
I think I should have known this. Where do we put hair salons, barber shops?
Those are in our B districts.
Massage parlors, they're all over the place now.
B districts, B districts.
They're all over the place now.
Yes, but they are not industrial in nature, so.
Well, those are, those are the ones that I thought about, and I'm glad, thank you for your reaction.
A question I have is, this is going to change things a little bit, and we've already have, I would say, a lot, I don't know how many, but in, again, south of 42, that industrial district there, I was just driving through there this weekend, there's, there appears to be a lot of more what I would call things that go in a commercial district or a business What do we do as far, everybody would, I would presume people are grandfathered in, but you said that the previous, I think you said earlier, that the previous, that some of these things run with the land.
Conditional uses, yes.
Conditional uses run with the land, and I think we've done a lot of conditional uses in that area. If a tenant leaves, does the conditional use go away? I mean, is-
It runs with the land.
Huh?
That is a good ques- Is that area- Is that area zoned I-3 or I-2?
That was, that was the first thing I was going to bring up is anything along 42 north and south is I-3.
So that's our industrial office park. We do have some different parameters. What we're going through here is I-1, which is north of 13.
Yes.
Basically, north of, north of Burnsville Bowl, north of 13, the, we call it the Lark Industrial Park. Even basically 13 to Cliff and even north of Cliff a little bit. It's our oldest industrial area, similar to the discussion we got into with the sports performance, very low ceiling heights, older buildings. I-3 is different because, well, it's newer, but also they're getting a lot of traffic off of 42. And that, that's kind of the, that's been the quandary with I-3 for quite a while is you get that, the 42 traffic, it wants to be a little more retail, but it's still industrial. So those have been some of the hangups we've had.
And we look at the intended purpose, the intended purpose differs a little bit also. And we can make that distinction between the I-1, I-1 and I-2 are some of our older districts. And it's pretty apparent that if we had one of these uses come in and locate, it could be very disruptive to other operations within the field of industrial uses. When we made these suggestions, we looked pretty close at the I-1, I-2 district and we don't believe we have a lot of grandfathered concerns there. In most cases, we don't have any in the, but we can make that distinction. And we'll take a close look at the I-3 and make sure that we don't create a situation of non-conformity, especially where we've got recent approvals.
Thank you.
Chris, I would like to, when we get that point, I would like, I think you typically do bring us any legal, non-conforming issues, given the thing. I agree with all of your, I think all of your deletions. I didn't see any that I disagreed with. I think we're trying to, I know initially the thought process here was to, what can we do to fill spaces in I-1 as that, as the economy has evolved and those buildings have aged? But I believe your deletions, how they do outweigh the additions are appropriate. As we think about mixed use in those areas and where you can have issues. I, my comment on the daycare is I don't think it should be allowed. I completely concur with the thought process about you need to have some daycare in an area where a worker that's working can drop off some children. I don't think it should be in that area and I think, I mean, it's, our city's not that big. There's enough other zoning districts aligning I-1 and I-2 that those would be allowed in, that it's, it's not like someone's living in an I-1 and dropping their daycare off at I-1. So the adult care and the daycare thing, I question that use. Chris, you, or, I'm sorry, someone touched on dog daycare?
Yes.
This may be a completely separate, but you talked about multiple tenant buildings. I was in a building in Burnsville recently where the tenant I was purchasing something from is next door to one of those businesses. And nothing was done in the way of sound abatement, nothing. And it's almost, now, I get that part of that needs to be the, what is that tenant doing and what's the landlord doing? But I'm not usually for that type of regulation, but I really felt sorry for this particular tenant given the noise that was coming from the tenant next door.
In one of my other communities, this proposal came forward on doggy daycare for a multi-tenant warehouse building. And when we looked at that, we, our first concern was this is a new use into this district, but this building was full except for this one tenant bay and they found it and it was affordable and they wanted to move in. And our concern wasn't for the doggy daycare, it was for what happens next door? Noise, abatement, urine control, dog runs, waste disposal? And so when we put together the ordinance, we thought, yeah, the use is appropriate. We've seen them in, we've seen dog training facilities, we've seen some kennels, they've worked. But the requirements that we've installed in that was you go in as a conditional use. We want the floors sealed so that they don't penetrate, so the next tenant doesn't get that smell forever. We wanted, we indicated that we wanted tiling at least 48 inches off the floor so it didn't wick up the sheet rock. We wanted a waste disposal plan in place so that their, you know, outdoor dog runs are picked up daily and the waste is properly disposed of in a closed container. You had to have sick rooms for dogs that were not well if you're going to take them in, those type of conditions. So, again, a lot of times we think about that regulations are onerous on the business. Well, we're also thinking about the business next door, so I don't think that was.
That unintended.
It was unintended circumstance.
And then lastly, I agree with the retail accessory, I mean, 800 square feet or 850 is really restrictive.
That's right.
For someone that's gonna, you mentioned a garage door place. It, I get that 1,000 square feet should be able to get, you know, there should be a happy number in there somewhere where they can come to us in the CUP and have a bigger number. But 1,000, 2,000 square feet for them to appropriately display what they're doing is not going to add traffic to the area and I believe would be harmonious in the area. So those are my comments.
I support your last one. That's what my last note here was, that the size of those units. You know, I am very restrictive for businesses.
Any other comments from other commissioners?
I think it was nice work.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is a great.
You don't think we're missing anything from your work in other communities? You don't think we've missed adding something?
I think before we come in here, I'll take a look, I'll scour all my other communities and see if we're missing anything, we'll throw it in there. The one thing I'm very, always very cautious of is, I like, well, communities are moving toward mixed use. If you want mixed use, set it up in an individual zoning district. But in, generally, our districts are intended to segregate these uses to allow each use to operate in a safe, unencumbered fashion. If we want industry, we want to make sure that they can operate. And that means we, that it might be outdoor storage, it might be large production, it might be orders. And so in that respect, they have to, they have to be able to operate. I can't tell you how many new businesses I've taken to some of my smaller communities because they opened up a shop next door that was complaining about their long-term use and they finally had to move, or a residential finally got to the limits of their property. That we need to have those protections built in so people can run their businesses. And so I think the uses that we're talking about taking out really don't fit. And quite frankly, they fit a lot better in our commercial zoning districts. And we don't have any limitations in that respect. We have a lot of commercial land too, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brixius. If there's no other comments or questions from commissioners?
Anything else from Chris?
No formal recommendation needed. We'll take your direction and if all goes well, we'll be back in May with a public hearing and ordinance. I don't recall the timing. We do need to get this in front of the Economic Growth Committee also. I'm not sure if that'll be before or after you see it again, but we'll have them take a look at it before it gets to council also.
Mr. Shirk, if there's anything that occurs to you between now and then, please contact Chris and give us the list.
Okay, we will do that. All right, gentlemen, we're getting there. Next item on the agenda is updates. Any updates from staff?
No, Commissioners, no updates.
Any updates from commissioners? Mr. Brixius, anything?
I don't have anything here. Can I just compliment you? Your debate and discussion on the scoreboard was, were very, very well managed and well behaved. I'm very impressed. I also compliment Chris because justifying the variances based on the variance criteria, he did an incredible job by trying to rationalize how we can get a 49-foot tall sign.
All right, thank you. All right, I think I'm waiting for one motion and that could be adjournment. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Pass this five zip. We are adjourned.